From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. Would like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council Meeting.
I'm Rick Chambliss with Marion County Funeral Home and Spry Memorial Chapel in Russellville, Alabama. This is Glenn Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes is guaranteed to be there.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guin to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Time to call our meeting order, so just want to welcome each one that's come out tonight to be with us. We have guests with us and we have folks here with actual business and some of our own staffs here with us and the media and the paper. Thank y'all for coming out. Couple of public service announcements I'd want to make tonight. There's been a good effort being made to help get our BFW post aligned and running here in Hamilton again. There'll be a meeting on August 22 at 7:00 p.m. at the auditorium of the Hamilton Police Station to set the charter up and they now have enough members signed in to recharter the post and other veterans of the area of the FFW post. Will be proud to have those services available and a place they can go and attend if any interested veterans are going to be at this meeting and sign up, be a part of the charter. You'll need to be there on August 22 at 7:00 p.m. because I think that's the night they're actually going to declare their charter. Also, let's remember our schools will be starting up this week. Our students will be coming to school midweek, I believe, and all of our citizens need to observe that all the crossings, crosswalks in our schools and also stopped buses needs to be observed. We don't want anyone running by a bus that stopped picking up those students. And we hope the SRO guys have the easiest year they've ever had in history. We don't want them working very much. We want them just to be there just in case. But this is the second year that we've provided SROs in our schools and we're real proud of that and we want to do them all kind of easy year this year. With all that said, we're going to stand at this time and have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance and we'll get started with the actual meeting. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you that we've had such a wonderful day in Hamilton, Alabama today. Lord, we thank you each day that you give us this life and breath that we breathe. We know it comes from you. Lord, we thank you for each blessing. We ask that you be our guest here tonight and help us to make your decisions for our city, help us all to grow together and build our city up and our community around it. Lord, be with these teachers as they start their new year for the students. May it be a wonderful year to be in school in Hamilton and the surrounding areas. We ask that you be with all those teachers who there are world leaders, Lord, that have to make such big decisions at this time in their lives. May they be guided by your hand. This is my prayer and prayers, man. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Item one on our agenda tonight is a recommendation to approve the minutes of the July 21 council meeting. Do we need a motion on that matter?
Motion.
Ross made the motion, we need a second. Sheer made the second. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Thank you. Item two is a recommendation to approve our accounts payable bills for July of 2025.
Motion.
We got a motion from Scott Robertson, we need a second.
Second.
A second from Wade. All those in favor of picking our accounts payable? Thank you. Item three is a recommendation to pass Resolution 2025-8-4 to adopt the city's Hamilton Transportation Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2025/2026. This will maintain the city's compliance for funds received from the Rebuild Alabama Act that was passed in 2019, which levy additional excise tax on gasoline and diesel fuel. The city of Hamilton is expected to collect an estimated $70,000 during the upcoming fiscal year, and these funds may only be used for the maintenance of roads and bridges. We'd like to adopt that resolution now.
I make a motion.
Ross made the motion, we need a second.
I'll say.
Scott and Tara, a second. All those in favor of adopting this? This money will strictly be used for our road and bridge upkeep and maintenance. Item four is a recommendation to award a bid to S.T. Bond who turned in the lowest bid price of $165,725 for the paving of various streets throughout the city of Hamilton. These streets will be an 840-litre-foot section of First Street Southeast, a 685-litre-foot section of Second Avenue Southeast, a 660-litre-foot section of Third Avenue Southeast, a 1,270-litre-foot section of Fifth Avenue Southeast, and a 1,425-litre-foot section of Sasser Drive along with a 320-square-foot parking pad area. Funds will be from the Rebuild Alabama account will be used to pay for this project. What we had represented bids for this, this was considerably the best bid and these folks do a good job, so I'd like to recommend that tonight.
Motion.
Second. A motion and a second from Scott and Wade. Those in favor of awarding that bid tonight? Thank you. We hope to get some streets that are so rough paved and smooth again. As well, we've got our, I was just mentioning, we've got our street department right now sealing roads all over town, so they've done some good work at the rec center also on the lots over there and plus the drive out to the plate area. So the street guys are very busy also in addition to this work. Item five is a recommendation to allow city clerk Angela Owen to open a new checking account at First National Bank for the Groydon, Alabama I-22 Industrial Park project. Funds of $1,467,000 have been awarded to the city of Hamilton for the preparation of two industrial sites for spec buildings in our building and bridge area industrial park. Those allowed to sign on this checking account will be Angela Owen, Amy Nix, and Val Page. In order to receive these funds that have been awarded, we'll need a checking account for it to be sent to.
I make a motion.
Got a motion? Need a second? Got a second? All those in favor?
And how much is this cost to the city?
The cost to the city will be about $9,000 for some engineering that we'll have to pay. The rest of it will be awarded. So that's a good bargain when you get a million forward and spend $9,000. Got the man in the room that's responsible for getting this for us. Tom, would you like to say a word to us about this before we move on with the rest of the meeting? We appreciate the hard work you put in on this, by the way.
The Groydon, Alabama program that we talked about before, it's a, sorry, Alabama? Well, you look at that, Hulabah. So this Groydon, Alabama program is a donation-based program and the funds are used for industrial development, construction projects. You can receive two construction bids when you apply it. You can use the lowest bid after that 1,046,700 number and it'll grade and create a two path, which two big advantages there. Prior to building a spec building, if somebody comes in as an interest party, you shake off about three, three, four months right there by expediting that part of the construction. And obviously, it's going to save costs. Whatever model ends up getting built, but it's sort of a public spec building, first you have a number of pride of ownership or pride of development, there's some places like there, that this Groydon, Alabama investment is going to cut out, an association amount of fronted costs, so it really makes it more competitive.
Does this program bear the name, Tom?
It's been around for a few years, yeah.
I don't think we've ever actually had an award from this particular program.
No, well, it's a donation program, so that's generally the biggest hurdle. We've gotten questions from some of our other communities about this and that's really, that's one of, that's the big driver. You have the companies or taxpayers that are paying enough taxes that would really donate to a specific project. To this point, if you look at it, a lot more in kind of more of your rural areas, larger counties, I think it's really impressive that you all got in your rural area receiving this. I don't know exactly how much, since I've been tracking it for, since I've been here about four years, it's been a lot of larger counties that have been playing on these stuff. It's good to get it in rural areas as well.
This is good work, Tom. Most of these funds, if it hadn't been for you, hardly any of it would have come to North Alabama. Most of it was central Alabama to the south. Over 80% of the money that's awarded in this award went to south, hardly central Alabama. You were one of the, we're one of the few recipients in North Alabama and thank you for that.
Yeah, a lot in over time and mobile and hostile area of our community and so forth, so I think that's good. And not to cheer our own horn, but I think we were leading up to this, we were able to use some creative ways to minimize, lower costs for our degrees and grant those funds to kind of set up earlier due diligence and planning and so forth and other ways to kind of make it so that it won't be as much. Some of these grant programs, not kind of growing out data, they're, they'll often have to get sizable match, so up to this point, they've found great ways, not to spend too much to manage this.
We've talked about getting some things ready in the park, but for lack of funds, we've not, not done it, but this has made it possible for us to go forward with at least two projects down here that wouldn't have been done otherwise.
Yes, we will. I think we'll be marketing these buildings, I mean, before the construction starts, so ideally, somebody in interest party would come and play and want to do a deal before you started the construction, because that would really reduce your risk. That's our call.
Any other questions, Tom? Thank you, Tom. All the work, appreciate it. Okay, now, we voted to pass that matter. I'm going to abstain since it involves the bank that I'm affiliated with and on the board, but thank y'all for allowing us to get that account going where we're going to receive those funds. Item six, in June of 2022, Steve Dudley was hired to be a consultant for the development of our Buddy Nashu River Schwartzlet project. As a part of his consulting services, we agreed to pay Mr. Dudley $600 per week. Now that the project is almost finished, a recommendation is made to cease payment and to cease the services off Mr. Dudley. At this point, we don't have year-round work for him and he's been a valuable part of our project and has just collected success off the project, but we just don't have year unemployment for him, so I'm going to recommend that we cease this payment.
I make a motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor of this motion? Thank you. We do appreciate Steve's work on this. Item seven, Amy Gillen and Leanne Jones of Riggs Accounting is here in present to give a review of our municipal audit for 2025. Is that the correct?
2024, that's 30.
2024, it's not in 2025. This will reflect 2024. From the Riggs Accounting Service, and we'll let y'all come forward and make your presentation, whoever the spokesperson is, or both of you want to stop.
I'll come and she's back.
Okay.
So I think I got a copy today, y'all, the copy before we started, or before the meeting started. And first of all, I want to say thank you for letting us do the audit. We appreciate it very much and we appreciate the help that the staff gives us trying to get it done. And basically, tonight I was just going to do an overview of the audit. I was going to kind of do the same thing as I did last year in other places I go and just kind of go, you know, take three or four pages, 500 or 20 minutes and go over the report. I mean, you can stop me if I have questions, but I have a tendency to get on the roll, so... But, so that's, you know, it's paper clipped together, the actual report, but there should be stapled at the front a three-page item that we're going to go over that you should have. And basically, like I said, it's going to be an overview of September 30th, 2024. And, you know, they just kind of tell you, say, okay, where were you last year, where are you this year, and what's the difference and so forth. So the first page, we're going to cover governmental funds, and that's the general fund, and it's going to be on modified accrual. Basically, that means what comes in and what goes out, because you don't, you know, in the proprietary area of the water, we charge fees. Up here on this side, it's mostly taxes and so forth. So that's why you do it a little differently than you do on full accrual accounting for the water. But anyway, so this first page is going to be the general fund, and I was just going to kind of go, start at the top on the balance sheet there, where it says balance sheet and, you know, assets and then 23 and 24. And right above that, you know, it says page six, column one, and I just put that on there so if y'all ever want to refer this back to the report, you can refer it back to the report. But, so I'll start at the top there for assets, for 23, $10,765, and 24, $6,802. So there was a decrease of $3,962. And so if you look at, I've got a number one beside it, so if you go down under there and look at number one, that'll kind of tell you what your differences are there. Basically, your largest variances were cash, it had decreases by $3,790, and receivables $572,000. The largest decrease in the cash is from basically the capital improvements that we're doing this year. Receivable, you know, that's like a receivable payable, that's just like a timing difference, really. And see, like on the next line where it says liabilities, 439 versus 623 with a $180,000 difference. Basically, you're saying, okay, I owe this, it's September 30th, but I didn't pay it till like 10/2 or something like that, so it's just a timing difference there for that $183, also. The equity section, the 10,00325 versus 6,179, so it shows a decrease of $4,146, which we're going to, that's basically the change in the bottom line for the current period. So we're going to go over that and see how the $4,146 change happened. And so if you'll go down to where it says page seven, column one, we'll start talking about the income statement. And you've got revenues, $10,852 versus 24, $10,987, which is an increase in revenues of $135,000. And if you want to narrow that down and look at number two down there, your main increases were in taxes and licenses of $131,000. When you start, you know, digging deeper to find out where that is, financial institution excise tax had decreased, but sales tax, property tax, and the aluminum power tax were your biggest increases. I did notice where occupational tax had increased $10,000, but those others had increased more. And I know y'all look at those on a monthly basis, they give you those reports on how much you've collected on those. Let's see, what's the next item here? Number three, we have expenses. So we've got $8,189 versus $13,436. So we have an increase of $5,246. So if you look down at number three, that's going to tell us where that went. And like I discussed above, you know, your largest increase was in capital expenditures of $4,740, and then the other increases were public protection, $324,000, general government, $62,000, public works, $87,000, culture and recreation had an increase of $31,000. And so we had to set them up. If you looked, if you went to page seven, you would see that they were set up in those categories. You know, there's a lot of accounts that come up under those categories, but that's the different categories we have to use on there. But even going a little bit deeper, you can see that under capital improvements, the biggest one, of course, was the track project that was going on. Under public protection, the largest change was under the jail assistance with a $200,000 to that. Salaries, insurance, those all, those had gone up, but that radio contract had went down because you bought some equipment that would allow your contract to go down in the future, that you could use that equipment. General government, the increase there was under salaries, repairs, sales tax collection, and utilities, and then public works, that, that's your street sanitation, had to do with salaries and insurance, and culture and recreation is going to be in repairs. So there's your changes on number three there. So then let's go back up there and look at other financing sources, the $10,359 versus the $10,697. So there was more trans, well, it says other financing sources because there's different things that can show up in there, but what's showing up in there this year is transfers. And if you look down at number four, that'll give you a little guidance on what, the line item mainly includes transfers to other funds, like for instance, you know, when you make monthly bond payments, you're just sending it over to a fund and then every two, I mean, every six months, they'll come in and take their payments, but you have to transfer money over to these funds. So that was actually, the bond fund transfers actually went down because the debt's paying down, but the other increase was you had to transfer some to the water department. And we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get on the water side, that that's what your transfers is, that's what's showing up in number three up there, I mean, number four, I'm sorry. Okay, so the next thing is, you know, the bottom line, so you can see on that bottom line where you've got $4,146, you know, that's your change up there in the balance sheet. So that's, you know, for the year, that's the bottom line for the general fund. All right, so then, you know, goes back to when I started, you know, where are we from the beginning of the year to the end of the year? Are we better off or we worse? That type thing. And so if you go back and you look at it and say, you know, in the balance sheet, assets had decreased, liabilities had increased, and equity decreased, the income statements, revenue increased, expense and transfers also did, though. But if you, you know, if you want to take an overall look at it, you can look at it like you spent some of your reserves, that's what caused the, you know, bottom line there, and you spent some of your reserves for capital projects, but still good standing because that, you know, you had a steady increase in revenue, so that's good. And then you still have reserves, even though you used some of the reserves for capital improvements. So I would say you were better off in the general fund from one year to the next. All right, so the next page is the water department. And it is, you know, like I said a while ago, it's proprietary, so it's full accrual, it kind of acts like a business because we charge fees for these services and so forth. So over here on this side, we're going to do depreciation, you know, we're just going to do things a little bit differently, so a few different things will come up over here that didn't come up over there on the general fund. If you start at the top there, it's that balance sheet, it's got asset and deferred outflows. So in 23, you've got $2,888, and 24, $10,292. So it's a decrease of $5,95 there. So if you take number one and you go down and look at number one, that'll give you your changes. Cash had decreased by $71,000, fixed assets by $413,000, but that was mainly reported depreciation, you know, your assets depreciate over time. And then deferred outflows by $114,000. And what the deferred outflows has to deal with, outflows and inflows that I'll talk about in a second, is like your retirement accounts, you know, over here on the water side, you have to say, okay, what do we think the liability's going to be from the actuary and look the liability. And then same thing on the post, the insurance, the post-employment benefits, you have to take that actuary and look those. So when I say deferred outflows, that's what I'm talking about there. But let's go back up and look at liabilities and deferred inflows, which we've, it's got the number two beside it, $2,137 versus $2,148. That's not a huge change, but $10,458 increase there. And then basically, that's a small change in the scheme of things, but your largest variances were in the post-employment benefits, you know, getting up to the actuarial value. And then customer water deposits have increased because of the amount that you've increased your deposit rate to. So that covers, and then, of course, the equity section, the $8,750 versus the $8,144, that's going to be your bottom line on the water side for the year, the difference in those. And so to come up with how the 606 came about, and you would go down to the income statement where it says page 11, and we'll kind of do it on this side. So revenues, $2,759 versus $2,728, so it shows a $30,982 and 40 decrease. And so if you look at number three, that'll explain that, because normally it's an increase, but the decrease is in the water and sewer revenue, mainly due to the discount that was given during the water outage, the problem that we had during this year. If you hadn't had that, it would have been positive, probably been a positive to the tune of about $70,000 on that instead of negative difference going down instead of up. On expenses, in 2023, $3,167 versus $3,878, so it had a variance of $711. And if you look down there at number four, I tried to give you the detail on that, which we, you know, I just tried to get the largest changes, which were chemicals was the most, and then repairs, and then salaries, retirement, supplies, and utilities were your biggest changes on those right there. The next line, interest income changed just a little bit. And then when I was talking about transfers a while ago, you know, I was talking those coming out of the general, well, that $541,000 was transferred into the water from the general. And then, so you've got your bottom line when you merge all those three things together. And so you sit back at the end of the day and say, okay, I looked at the balance sheet and the income statement, so what is, you know, what about the change on these? So that's where I get to the final analysis at the bottom. Overall, assets and equity had decreased, but mainly due to depreciation. And then the next line, I tell you, you know, that depreciation was $520,09. And so, you know, one way you can think about it, it's that 606 up there, negative, if you add that $520 back, that's usually using the idea of your cash flow, but that's still, you know, a negative number, so, but, you know, it still, you know, a negative number, so, but, you know, it makes you feel a little bit better about the, you know, when you add depreciation back. The decrease in revenue and increase in expense, that's what's, you know, that's what caused the general fund to have to transfer that five hundred and forty-one over there is to help it, you know, support it. But I'm still thinking of different things, you know, analyzing the two, and I say, okay, well, the water still has equity, but the problem is, it's mainly capital equity, it's like, it's not liquid, it's just assets, you know, you have the water systems and everything. So, you know, it has assets, it's just not liquid, that's why the general fund was having to send money over there. So, you know, if you look at the reality for the year, because of the water outage and having to get the credits and the city having to, you know, send support over there to help it, then, you know, it's probably not in a better position than it was last year. I think it can be, you know, I mean, I know I've talked to management and stuff and they've said, you know, talking about the chemicals, you know, different pricing strategies, trying to get a hold of those and different things like that. But, you know, you did have a lot of challenges in this year with the water prices and everything. I'm sure I'm not telling y'all anything, I'm sure you went through a lot of that, so. But that's where we stand this year for the water department. And then the last page, what that is, is, you know, I talked, you know, a little bit more of what is proprietary on the water, so I don't want to miss out on the assets on the general fund. So I just, you know, kind of refer you to, I say on page nineteen and twenty, and the notes that it'll give you a list of things that were capitalized over five thousand dollars for the year, but it gives them, it gives them in segments, you know, you can't really see details. And I want you to know where, you know, your purchases were for the year for your assets. So culture and recreation, there was a hundred and twenty-one thousand spent during the year on that, that was the Hamilton House, the Park Pavilion, the restrooms and some equipment. The track had the six million, one thirty-three, that was the new construction. General government, twenty-five thousand, that was a work truck and some equipment pieces on that. The fire had four twenty-one, that was four hundred, and that was fire truck and then various other equipment. The police had a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, which that was the mobile communications, which I had talked about a little bit earlier, a Tahoe and then various equipment. And then public works, there was two hundred and six thousand, four twenty, for a backhoe and some pavement. So the total of that's like seven million, forty-six thousand. So that's where a lot, you know, because on, on the government side, you expense all that stuff out instead of capitalize it and amortize it, so, or depreciate it. So I just wanted to just say where that has gone. And then on the water, you did, ended up capitalizing a hundred and six thousand, various equipment, there was like three pieces of equipment on there that did that. And then the final thing on there is I want you to know about assets, I want you to know about debt, because we don't talk in detail a lot on the general fund about the balance sheet. And so I would refer you back to page twenty-three and tell you that there's a detail back there that'll give you your general, you know, it'll give you your debt, which your debt comprises of three general obligation bonds, two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen, and two thousand and nineteen ones. So I'll just kind of give you an overview, a snapshot of your balance sheet on the governmental funds. That's what I usually cover, but if I open for questions if anybody has them, or if they're looking at them later and has them, I'm open for questions today.
I'd just say, on page twenty-three of the audit, concerning our general obligation and bonds, since I've been sitting in this seat, there's been a reduction of over six million dollars on our, on our total city's debt, bond debt, plus we paid off the water treatment plant.
That's the water has no debt, the water's.
And we haven't borrowed any money and gone in debt for anything we've bought since I've been there these nine years. We haven't been to the bank to finance anything. So the track has been very expensive, but it's a good addition to our city. We're putting the finishing touches on that, we'll soon be finished with expenses involving the track and then we'll have it there for many years of enjoyment. We do appreciate the rigs firm, uh, firm coming in each year and doing such a great job with our audit. Sometimes the numbers, we look at decreases and we say, oh, my goodness, but sometimes if you want nice things, you've got to spend some money to have them, and we've got some very, very nice things done. New equipment for our guys to work with through the years has been a real asset for them, and they'll do, so they've got better things to work with. And of course, we got caught in the COVID period, this, this, a lot of these contracts were let at the COVID time when the prices were going up tremendously fast and tremendous in volume. So we, all in all, I think we've had a good run here, unless you're here to say otherwise, I'm going to say bravo to these guys that's been your city government for the last five years.
I would say so.
Just lots been accomplished, I'm very proud of it. Thank you for the good job. Any questions of our auditors today?
I appreciate Amy and Leanne and all the girls in the office that does a great job that, and the mayor and council is trying to watch our expenses. But we've always had clean audits, even back when I was in, and that's, some cities can't say that.
And anytime we've ever recommended anything, I always jump out.
We've always done immediately, so.
And we appreciate that.
Yeah, good financial audit is flawless for me, see, and we always have good, thank you.
The first roadmap they gave me as our auditors was the benefits that we were paying after the people had stopped working for us and the numbers were growing astronomically and our responsibility to the people who had been here in the past, benefits and insurances and whatever we were passing on after the fact, they just showed me the math on it and what it was going to do to us in liabilities. We discontinued some of those things and immediately that was a, a good response for us to have done that, and thank you. I can appreciate that enough today, even, it's been several years now, but it meant a lot to us then, it still means the same today. You have to be careful what you obligate the city for. And like I say, with the management of these people, we haven't avoided having to finance anything, we've paid cash for everything that we've done. It's depleted some of our reserves, but still, I'm, I'm real proud of the things that's been done and that have been given to this community because of this council right here.
And the revenues continue, they keep going.
Well, our numbers, our numbers, that's what's kept us moving forward, is the numbers, our revenue numbers look really good. Tax revenues, occupational tax benefits, those kind of things.
They're keeping in the right direction.
I had a person tell me today, folks aren't drinking enough liquor around here, their income off alcohol is pretty low. So I'll just leave that hanging, I didn't make the statement, but I did hear it today. So I'll leave that one hanging now.
No problem.
Does any of the, any of the council have any comments on that?
How about our attorney?
I don't, I don't think we've actually approved the audit, Mayor Higginson did. Okay, I didn't know if you need to. No, I don't have anything, I do need an executive session to discuss some litigation, but no, I don't have anything else.
Thank you very much.
I make a motion to approve the audit.
I'll second.
We got a motion second, let's vote. Okay, we approved it, our audit, okay, thank you. I had listened to the audit review, but we didn't take it to vote, okay. All right, we need to have an executive session.
I'll make a motion.
We've got a motion to enter executive session for a little while.
I'll second.
A second, all those in favor of that motion?
And for the record, it's to discuss pending litigation.
Litigation, thank you.
Will we be, we will have another vote then, that one? Don't change anything on a voting part of the meeting. Okay, the voting part of the meeting is over.
From a small dent to major collision repair, Hamilton Paint and Body is here for you. Owners Kim Guin would like to say thank you for your business.
Hello, I'm Richard Kitchens, owner of Sports Gallery here on the Court Square in Hamilton. I'd like to thank all of our customers and thank you for watching the Hamilton City Council meeting.
I'm Rick Shambless with Marion County Funeral Home and Scribe Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Dwayne Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in two thousand and two, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes, is guaranteed to be there.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Guin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at two oh five, nine two one, six seven, one two.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you, with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career check and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.